All right, ladies and gentlemen, we will call this meeting to order. Can I get a motion, please? The agenda for the January eighteenth, twenty twenty-two regular meeting of council be adopted as presented. Counselor should I make that motion? Any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion carried. Can I get a motion, please? That the minutes of the January eleventh, twenty twenty-two regular meeting council be adopted as presented? Counselor Taylor will make that motion. Any questions, comments, or concerns? No questions, comments, or concerns? I guess I'm the only one that actually read them this week. Um, just, uh, there was an error under council committee reports. Uh, number five, under my committee report, uh, the chief administrative officer is no longer uh, that individual, but it's Luke Mercier. So, uh, we can make that change. So, would you like to make a friendly amendment to your motion?
Yes, I would.
Okay, so the motion is that the minutes of the January eleventh regular meeting are out the, yeah, no, yeah. I mean, the minutes of the January eleven, twenty twenty-two regular meeting of council be adopted as amended. Now, call the question. All those in favor?
Always being nice to you, and I didn't want to point the arrow. Okay.
Oh, we've missed it. Uh, can I get a motion, please, that council give first reading to bylaw number two-two-seven-zero? Counselor Moore will make that motion, and we have Ms. Florizone, senior planning manager, who will do a presentation on this for us today.
Good evening, mayor and council. I do have a, um, presentation. Let's see if I can get this to do its thing. Oh, why am I just about, sorry? Are you seeing my presentation?
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you so much. I'm, I'm trying something a little bit different today, so I appreciate the feedback. Um. Land use by law amendment twenty-two seventy is intended to address a gap the administration has found in our land use by law. Um, to add excavation stripping or grading into the various districts. There have been a lot of inquiries in the last year or so about tree clearing and removing gravel, which has posed a little bit of a problem because we have a section currently in our land use by law that speaks to um, excavation stripping and grading, but it's not a listed use in any district. As it is a development as defined in municipal government act, it is prudent for us to add it into the districts. Uh, so we'd like to add a definition, provide a clear explanation of when it is exempt from a development permit, add excavation stripping or grading as a use into the land use districts, and, uh, continue to provide that clarity and direction for developers. So it is being proposed to be added in all districts. And, uh, yeah, that's the summary.
Great. Thank you very much, Ms. Florizone, for your presentation. Counsel, any questions, comments, or concerns? Counselor Scharder?
Um, through the mayor to Ms. Uh, Florizone. Florizone. Um, where I understand why you're doing it, but a lot of times if a contract's going to come in and do a development and, you know, tree removal and stuff. Uh, I know I've done it several times, and a lot of times just for sake, they want you to know and find your neighbors to say you're taking the trees, don't even know you own them. So I understand what you're doing, but what was the big issue with like putting it in development permit? You come in, you're going to develop the property, and you're going to say, okay, I'm going to be excavating land and trees and stuff. So I'm just like, I know what you're saying, but I just wanted explanation because I've done it twice now, and I'm just curious why it wouldn't belong in your development permit. That's for us all.
Certainly, through the mayor. Um, it would be a development permit now, so it's always been defined as development through the municipal government act, and again, there is a section currently in our land use by law that speaks to the use. However, it not being listed in any district makes it very challenging unless that activity is associated with some other development. Um, just stockpiling, stripping, excavation, grading, tree clearing on its own currently actually can't be contemplated under a permit. Um, so by adding it in as a listed use, we can issue a permit for just that particular use.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any further questions, comments, or concerns? All right, I will call the question. All those in favor? Motion carried. Can I get a motion, please, that council give a first reading to bylaw number two-two-seven-zero? Counselor Byer will make that motion. And we have, uh, Guy Latour, our manager of parks and facility maintenance with us tonight to do a presentation.
Uh, I think it's two-two.
Seven, seven. Yeah, it's by law two-two-seven-two.
Two-two-seven-zero.
Oh, sorry, yeah, no, I'm, yeah, you are correct. So the motion is council give first reading of bylaw number two-two-seven-two. Sorry about that, folks.
You're kind of at the first point of order.
Yeah, good job, Counselor Taylor.
Good job. I'm trying to be nice to you.
All right, Mr. Latour, you can go ahead.
Uh, thank you very much, and, um, through the mayor to council, I have a very short presentation, and then I'll open it up for questions. So I'm just going to share my screen here. Everybody see it?
Yes.
Yes.
Great. Um, so first of all, I would just like to, uh, make sure I thank, uh, Athena and Rena and Daniel for all the assistance and hard work that they've put in uh, getting the, uh, the updated bylaw to this point. Um, so, sorry, the current bylaw number one-eight-nine-seven is dated May of two thousand, and as such, uh, and as such, we've done a comprehensive review um, with the following goals in mind, uh, ensure alignment with current operational needs, ensure the bylaw can be easily read and understood, and generally modernize the language and content of the bylaw. The proposed bylaw number two-two-seven-two would repeal and replace bylaws number one-eighteen-nine-seven and nineteen-one-six. Um, consultation included, uh, all our regular regional, uh, communities of our size, and the proposal by law content is in alignment with, uh, the other bylaws that we've consulted. So changes and updates to the new bylaw, we've expanded and updated definitions in that section C of the new bylaw. Uh, clarification of monuments and marker guidelines, section nineteen and twenty-one and twenty in the new bylaw. Um, I would like just to take a, a quick second to talk to that point, and, um, I need to just access my notes. I'm just going to stop sharing for one second. So, uh, with the monuments, our intention is to keep the graves free of anything, uh, objects and restrictions, uh, on the head of, or sorry. Our intention is to keep the grave free of any objects and restrict all monuments to the head of the grave. Um, as a result, it allows us to be very efficient and effective in the maintenance of the cemetery. Having monuments and decorations like grave markers, uh, directly over top of the grave make it very difficult to maintain the plot. Uh, it makes it difficult for our equipment to operate on it and mow the grass, to do additional internments, as well as be able to work on, uh, the adjacent plots. Uh, the, there's lots of potential for items that are on the grave to get damaged if we allow that. Uh, we allow a headstone and a flat marker at the top of the grave, giving the plot owner multiple options for monuments. In the specific case of cremations, like, uh, Counselor Bevan asked at the last time we brought this to council, uh, you do have at the headstone, uh, the headstone and the flat marker uh, at the head that you can use to put all your inscriptions on, and, um, they do not have to be removed uh, to put inscriptions on. The monument company can come out and inscribe onsite, keeping costs at minimal um, for a cremation if somebody's going to put six cremations in there. Uh, the plot owner just has to be well informed by us on what their options are, and then manage those options in advance. This is in alignment with, uh, how other cemeteries are operating, uh, with their, uh, plots, uh, also. So I'll, I'll share back. Sorry about that. Um, we've also clarified clarification and updated the general regulations. We have a prohibition on internments under monuments or grave cover, covers. Um, uh, for the, uh, reasons that I was just discussing before, it's extremely difficult for us to do that, and, uh, we would most likely damage that cover. And then modernization of all sections with extended more up-to-date details. Um, and we've dad a whole section of an addition of disinternment guidelines, which is section eighteen. Uh, the new bylaw requires that a third party rather than town staff perform disinternments. Uh, there, this requirement was included due to the following considerations: potential for damage to the remains and resulting liability issues, and emotional impacts it could cause on our staff. Um, that's the basics of the changes, and I'm open for questions.
All right, thank you, Mr. Latour. Counsel, do you have any questions, comments, or concerns? Counselor Bevan?
Through the chair to Guy, I'd like to say thank you to yourself, Athena and Rena, for looking after the cemetery. You have answered my question that, uh, I'd asked earlier, and that I didn't know if you thought of it one hundred percent, but I'm happy with it now. The other thing I want to ask is, uh, Summit Memorial will come out and do, like you said, do onsite at gravy. When somebody comes in to see Athena in the back, you give them a package. Will in the package, will there be information on them to be able to come back out if they have more than one cremation that wants to go in that plot, not plot?
So Latour?
Through the chair to Counselor Bevan, um, that's definitely, uh, we're updating our information packages to go along with the new bylaw, and we will be providing them very clear information on what they can and can't do. We won't direct them to a specific memorial, um, provider, um, or, um, for, uh, the, um, monuments, um, but we will let them know very clearly that they need to plan ahead, and that's an option of how they can deal with when additional internments come in a cemetery or a cremation plot if they're doing multiple cremations.
All right, thank you, Mr. Latour. You have one follow-up? You have a follow-up?
Yeah, uh, to the chair, to, uh, Guy. So when a person comes in and wants a plot, and they want to put some cremations in, you have guidelines at the start to say that uh, Joe will be put up in the left-hand corner, and his wife will be up in the right-hand corner, so on and so forth down to the sixth one. They have to be, you have to, people have to tell you whereabouts in that plot they're going to be, so that you don't go and dig up anybody else.
Yes. Through the chair to Counselor Bevan, uh, we track that information, uh, very diligently, uh, but we, we do not tell them who goes where. They get to choose that, but we document very closely, uh, when we intern somebody who is in a certain portion of that plot and what location they're in.
Got you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Latour. Counselor Sharp?
Through the chair to Guy, on the tombstones, like I'm understanding why I'm at the head, is there any kind of height restriction that would kind of answer what uh, Counselor Bevan said? So if you put six people a maximum, and you could add to the headstone and make it taller, is there a height restriction, or I'm just not finding it?
So through the, through the chair to Counselor Schard, the information package when we give them out to them to, uh, has all the, uh, uh, dimensions of the, um, headstones that are allowed, and as long as you're within those dimensions, we allow it, but we do have strict regulations on the dimensions themselves, and you can't exceed those dimensions for the headstone or the flat marker at the head of the grave.
Okay, thank you. All right, anybody else? Questions, comments, or concerns? Counselor Taylor?
Uh, through the mayor to Mr. Latour, um, you say in your report the new bylaw requires that funeral homes rather than town staff perform discernments, but disinter, disinternments, sorry. Um, what is the con, I assume there's a contracted extra cost to this? Um, do you know how much approximately that is? Is it factored in, or has this been something that's been ongoing already? It's just now put in the bylaw?
Mr. Latour?
Through the chair to Counselor Taylor, um, I do not have a cost on what a third party would, uh, cost to do a disinternment. Um, this is something that, uh, has been identified, and we've been trying to deal with, and that's why it's in the new, uh, bylaw. We, we have done our very best to shy away from disinternments at this point.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else? Questions, comments, or concerns? Counselor Bevan?
Through the chair to Guy, just one other question here. Will you, uh, be sharing this, uh, with the funeral home director here? So he knows everything that's going on?
Yes, uh, through the chair to Counselor Bevan, um, I did, um, before the last meeting when we posted it, uh, provided him with some information, and then, um, prior to, as soon as it was posted on the website, I forwarded it to him for he was aware of this meeting and the bylaw for he could look at it.
Thank you. All right, thank you, Mr. Latour. With that, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Motion carried. Can I get a motion, please, that council give a second reading to bylaw number two-two-seven-two? Counselor Schard, any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion carried. Can I get a motion that bylaw number two-two-seven-two be placed for third reading? That be counsel positioning, all those in favor? Motion carried, and can I get a motion, please, that council give third reading to bylaw number two-two-seven-two? Counselor Bevan, all those in favor? Motion carried. Thank you, Mr. Latour.
Thank you very much. We really appreciate the support.
All right, can I get a motion, please, that council approve the transfer of three thousand dollars from the revenue sharing reserve to the twenty-twenty-two cemetery budget and authorize administration to proceed with culbarian repairs and mitigation of damaged remains? Iro will make that motion, and Mr. Latour is with us again.
Uh, through the mayor to the, um, council, um, the report is in front of you, and I'm open for questions.
All right, council, any questions, comments, or concerns? We've had a couple discussions about this already. Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion carried. Can I get a motion, please, that council direct administration to adjust the existing facility rental payment terms for the Greater Metro Junior A Hockey League team, the Edson Eagles, to require the team to pay all fees a minimum of one month in advance? Counselor Moore will make that motion, and we have Mr. Bob Beck, general manager of community protective services, uh, to talk about this item.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Um, as councils are aware, you had a presentation in December from the Edson Eagles. They had two requests of, of council. Uh, that was to, uh, allow them to pay only one month in advance of their fees for rental of the ice, and the second request was, uh, for them to have a dedicated locker room. Uh, so we've reviewed the, uh, the request, and our recommendation is, uh, that, uh, that they be allowed to, uh, pay just one month in advance. At the start of their usage, they were required to pay two months in advance, and, um, their request is to go to one month, and so far, they've, they've, they've paid on time. They've been excellent. They've never missed a payment. There's no reason to, uh, we, we encourage council to agree that it's one month in advance. It's just fine, and, uh, uh, we've really only got a couple months more to go in the season. There's very little risk, and they've been excellent to deal with. Um, as for the second request, uh, they've asked for a dedicated, uh, dressing room. Um, we would recommend council not, uh, grant that, this at this time. Uh, and really, our, our biggest concern is it has to do with how the issue was dealt with in summer of, uh, twenty-twenty-one, when the, uh, uh, council was, uh, seeking proposals for a dedicated junior hockey team. Um, and at that time, uh, the decision was made not to go with an exclusive use contract with any team. It would be open to anyone to rent ice. Um, and so as part of that, it was communicated back to all the proponents. Um, you're all free to rent ice, and no concessions would be given to any parties. And we believe that the dedication of a dressing room would constitute a concession on one of the parties. Uh, we're just recommending not at this time.
All right, thank you very much, council. Questions, comments, or concerns? Counselor Moore?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, through the, Mr. Beck, uh, in history of hockey for Edson, has, uh, there been any concession made for a permanent dressing room for any hockey team that you know throughout the year?
Mr. Mayor, uh, through the council, um, yes, it's, it's, it's relatively typical with an exclusive use uh, use contract with a junior hockey team. When you enter into a contract, it usually involves a dressing room, usually a call, uh, usage of hospitality rooms, um, and even an office room. Uh, there's, it's built into a contract, and it's and it's usually encompassed in an agreement that they would be the only junior hockey user of the facility as well. It's an excuse of exclusive use contract, and those are very typical, and they're done on a, on a proposal basis from time to time, and Edson has done them. In fact, the previous, uh, junior hockey team had such a contract.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments, or concerns? Counselor Taylor?
Uh, through the mayor to Mr. Beck, um, just a few questions in regards to the payment scheme. Uh, who was the original agreement negotiated with? Was it negotiated with council? And why was it two months? Was there a reason behind that? And I don't know what other user groups do with, doesn't sound like they would go to council to these kind of things. Usually, administration just deals with it. So just wondering again, uh, why was it originally two months? Who negotiated the agreement, and what other user groups generally do?
All right, that's right.
Mr. Mayor, through the council, at the end of the day, uh, council was aware of the proponents. Uh, the decision was made by administration, um, and it was, uh, negotiated with the hockey team at the time, uh, and they indicated no objection at the time. Um, they've since asked for the one month instead of two, and based upon their, their history with us, um, we don't see a risk in that.
And what are other user groups usually do?
Uh, well, uh, through the mayor to council, we've got, uh, the other user groups have longstanding agreements with us. Uh, this one is simply a rental agreement. Uh, so it's a little bit, it's a little bit unique to Edson. In fact, it, most of the time when you've had a junior hockey team, you have had an exclusive use agreement. So you've got a, you've got a lease agreement for the facility. Uh, this one's a simple ice rental, and it's almost it's almost on a week-to-week basis, um, believe it or not, and, uh, uh, the other thing that separates us a little bit from some of the other facilities that we've researched is uh, we don't have a strong bylaw of dictating how these things should be handled, which we would recommend council consider in the future or a policy. Um, so, uh, it's based on past practice.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Byer?
Thanks, uh, through the chair to administration. Thanks for bringing this forward. Um, uh, regarding the locker room space, um, I, I support your request to not, um, offer that. Um, I, I, I think it's best to honor the commitments that we've already made um, with all of the three groups that, um, gave us proposals, and uh, since none of them met the minimum requirements that we're asking, um, and, and we still have one that decided to go ahead and um, rent that space, um, I think it's fair to, um, keep it the way that it is right now.
All right, thank you. Counselor Schard?
Um, through the chair to Bob, um, where we talked about the actual proposal, we're did, uh, we're planning on doing that in the near future because it was last year when we put out a proposal to make an exclusive team. Is that something that we're going to be doing in the near future again? Because now we have a hockey team, and we have three interested, so or is this too soon to ask?
Um, I'm happy to, uh, Mr. Mayor, I'm happy to hazard a guess that, um, I would love to see it as a topic on your strategic planning exercise.
Yeah.
Uh, I think that that will be a great discussion topic. Uh, it, it must, it should be done for the future, is to go full proposal. Um, uh, just like you did before, and just see what's out there.
And then just one follow-up. I have to agree with you. I did hear the locker room request, but I have to agree with the comment. We asked for proposals. Proposals came to us. To be fair, if we change it now, then we're unfair to the other teams that made the, the actual proposal. So right now, they're allowed to use the locker room while they're playing hockey, same as any other user group. So, yes, I like to comment, Michigan are planning, we've planned to do something long-term, and now that this team has history with Edson, I'm very pleased that they're paying on time because not only them, but some of the other, from our soccer fields or wherever, it's pretty hard to go chasing the money once after the fact. So in most cases, um, a lot of times when you're renting building or putting something on, you're expected to put some kind of deposit. So, um, I hope in the future we can find a word, and, you know, this needs to be successful on the front of them putting a
All right, any other further questions, comments, or concerns? Counselor Bevan?
Through the chair to Mr. Beck here. So does that go with the minor hockey, with the midget team having a dedicated dressing room there also?
Mr. Mayor, through the council, just, could I just get, clarify the question?
Well, in the past years, and I think this year through the midget team always had a dedicated dressing room. So does that still stand for them right now with nobody else?
Um, through the, through the mayor to Counselor Bevan, yes, that's, that's my understanding is, uh, that the U-18 team does have a, an exclusive use dressing room.
All right, thank you, uh, Counselor Bevan. We're not here to talk about other user groups, we're talking about this.
There's no, but I mean, they got a dedicated dressing.
Counselor Bevan, I heard your question. I heard your question, Counselor Bevan. So, um, any other further questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing on, I will call the question. All those in favor? Motion carried. Are you in favor or opposed, Counselor Bevan? I oppose. Okay. Uh, can I get a motion, please, that council direct administration to reserve a locker room space for the exclusive use of the Greater Metro Junior A Hockey League team, the Edson Eagles in the Edson District Leisure Center? Counselor Taylor will make that motion. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor? All those opposed? Are you in favor or opposed?
I can't even think right now. First one, I made a mistake. I'll, I'll pause it. Yeah, I'm in favor of trying to give him a fresh one, but.
Okay, so you're in favor of motion number two?
Okay, whatever that was.
All right, so we have six opposed and one in favor.
You've lost your first vote, six to one. Congratulations.
Can I get a motion, please, that council approve the written submissions, the provincial government's budget twenty-twenty-two consultation initiative as set out in attachment one of the January eighteenth, twenty-twenty-two request for proposal? Counselor Byer will make that motion, and we have Mr. Passy here to, uh, review this letter with us. Mr. Passy, go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, council. Uh, the province, uh, has given Auburn's opportunity to provide input to their budget for to a twenty-twenty-two year. Um, and so a letter was drafted to lay out some priorities that the town of Edson has that they'd like to, we'd like to see incorporated in their twenty-twenty-two budget. Um, those priorities, uh, were infrastructure and stable funding for municipalities, homelessness, downloading services and expenses to the municipal level, policing and funding for healthcare. Um, these priorities were determined, uh, based on discussions through the twenty-twenty, our twenty-twenty-two budget um, deliberations, emergent issues that have, have risen up in the last few months, recent months, and other items that have been discussed at the council and committee, the whole level. Um, the consultation closes on, this Friday on January twenty-first, and so all submissions must be made by that date. Happy to answer any questions that council may have.
All right, council, any questions, comments, or concerns? Counselor Taylor?
Uh, through the mayor to council administration, uh, letters, very good. The only thing I would suggest is that every municipality is going to ask for these things, is going to put these things. How do we differentiate Edson from everywhere else? And that is through statistics, through evidence. You look at the second, uh, the, the third paragraph in terms of top homelessness and addictions, uh, You know, we speak about it, all those things are true. However, we don't support it with any evidence. We have that evidence. In fact, the evidence actually comes in the next presentation from the fire department talking about. Both for the used department calls, stats regarding calls on vulnerable population. Putting that information in there actually strengthen the letter and make Edson very unique in terms of this is a problem that Edson face. We look at. The 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 cost in terms of policing, you you gave evidence there. You look at the last comment in terms of health services, talking about how many doctors and nurses are needed here. The actual numbers were lost, the the closure of beds over the over the winter break. These types of things that evidence strengthens the letter and makes Edson stand out as having these concerns. Every municipality has these same concerns. You're going to see, you know, hundred and some letters that are identical. What makes us different is we have the statistics to actually back it up. There actually a problem in it. So this is my recommendation to make those changes to the letter just to strengthen.
All right. Any other questions, comments or concerns? Counselor Sharnar.
Through the mayor to just to comment, I agree with the letter, but have we involved our MLA to let us know we're doing this? Because he's very supportive of us. So I agree with the letter. I agree with what you're saying, but. Hopefully they get every town writes a letter, but I'm just curious if we involve their MLA for the input on this.
Counselor Sharnar, I can tell you that our MLA is very well for positions on all these matters.
Okay, I was just curious for you.
All right. Anybody else? Questions, comments or concerns? Counselor Byron.
Thanks. That's through the chair to administration. I would just support Counselor Taylor's comments on if there are any ways to add. A few extra statistics to support the information that we're we're asking. I think that would be appropriate.
All right. So I would just suggest we'll redraft this letter and just email it out to everybody to make sure he's okay with it before we send it out. All right. With that, I will call the question. All those in favor. Motion carried. Can I get a motion, please, that council accept the annual fire department update for twenty twenty one, including information related to the green light initiative? And current emergency response trends as information. Counselor Sharnar make that motion and we do have fire chief Tyler Robinson here with us this evening. Good evening, chief.
Good evening, mayor and council. How are you this evening?
Excellent. How are you?
Good. Am I? I don't see my face on TV. Am I on there?
Oh, you're here.
You're here. Excellent.
You didn't write the internet yet, Tyler.
All right. I'm just gonna go ahead and share my screen. Bear with me one second. Whoops. I think that's the one that we want. Is that correct, Steve? Are you with me? So twenty twenty one, I just want to share a couple of things. Twenty twenty one was. Obviously a very, very busy year for the fire department. This evening, I just want to present some stats. We're gonna go over the twenty twenty one overview and stats, some call trends. That include medical first response, which is the MFR, as well as outside fires, which are some trends that we've been tracking. That have, you know, been brought to our attention as well as the green light initiative that council passed last February. So for twenty twenty one, Edson Fire Department responded to four hundred and eleven emergencies, which includes house fires, collisions. High angle rescue, RCMP assists and many more. Unfortunately, we did have one fatality structure fire this year. Members provided twenty two thousand one hundred and ninety eight hours, person hours of. On call training and and response. Just a fun fact, that's equivalent to eleven full time positions. Not going anywhere with that. I'm just trying to highlight how many hours the members put in. EFD also maintains a strong working relationship with our local. Mutual aid partners, our RCMP and our EMS. Our hazard tree mitigation project that we did in conjunction with Guy La Tour and his team from Parks was very successful. As most of you probably know, we had a lot of hazard trees in our trail system that our firefighters. With the the assistance, obviously with parks. Were able to go and and cut down and clear trails and make sure we didn't have further hazards. To the rest of the population utilizing that trail system. Seven of our members were nominated and approved for the Alberta Emergency Services Medal. Which is twelve years of dedicated service of the province of Alberta and emergency services, which is remarkable. Aside from emergencies, Edson Fire Department maintains accreditation through the state's codes council. To provide fire calls, investigations and fire safety inspections. Hours I didn't track, but we, the the volunteers with fire department. Provide countless hours to nonprofit organizations such as the food bank and the hospital and. Even just going to the hospital and and serve an ice cream to the boys is is. Just some of the things our guys do. Our critical incident stress management team continues to provide post incident and ongoing peer support to our first responders. And. Our volunteer fire brigade set up our community tent fourteen times this year. If you don't know what the tent is, that's our big forty by sixty community tent that we set up for weddings. Really functions, things like that. Just some quick stats. We we did four hundred and eleven responses in twenty twenty one. That is a huge increase. That's up ten point seven percent. From last year. Two hundred and six of those were medical first response calls, which is about fifty percent of our calls. And that's up from forty eight percent. In from twenty twenty, sorry. The graph that you see on your screen only represents the three primary call types. So our primary call types were medical first response, alarm calls and outside fires. The two that stuck out this year are medical first response and outside fires. Alarms are always there. Just that's the nature of the beast alarms and and motor vehicle accidents are typically our our top two. But we've seen a trend that I want to discuss a little bit with our medical first response calls as well as our outside fire calls and counselor. Taylor kinda alluded to this earlier. If you don't know what MFR is, I know we got a couple new counselors here this evening for for the fire department update, not new. Edson Fire Department responds automatically to Delta and Echo call types, which are very serious call types with EMS. They are the not, the heart's not working, the lungs aren't working very good, you're not conscious, you're. It's it's a life or death kind of thing. And then Charlie is a fifteen minute delay. So if the ambulance is going to be delayed fifteen minutes or more. The fire department automatically responds with with trained medical providers. To stabilize the patient prior to the arrival of VMS. So that's kind of what the MFR program is. If you look at the the chart. MFR calls are the dark blue. So you can see went from a hundred and sixty six to twenty in twenty nineteen. To two hundred and six in twenty twenty one. As well, outside fires, alarms are are pretty consistent. Outside fires have really spiked and this is. Just within the town limits of Edson. It's not wildland fires or anything. It's in our trail systems. It's in our. Our backyards kind of thing. So the outside fires have gone from six in twenty nineteen to twenty five in twenty twenty one. To touch on that just a hair further, our MFR highlights. The. Left hand side on your screen is non-drug related, which are very consistent. The dark ones that go from like seventeen to thirty six to fifty three, that's that's the concern area. So in twenty nineteen, we responded to seventeen drug related overdose type calls. And it spiked to fifty three here in twenty twenty one. And then our undetermined is pretty consistent, that mid thirties area. And where the undetermined comes from is it represents calls that are not specified by nine one one dispatch. It represents calls that are both drug and non-drug related incidents that. We we just weren't informed about essentially through dispatch and and that could be caller information. Dispatch interrogation, that kind of thing. Firefighters are also stood down to about nine percent of medical first response calls. So that nine percent can be. Pretty much equally divided between drug and non-drug and undetermined as unspecified. While non-drug related and undetermined responses have remained consistent, there has been a an obvious spike in the drug related overdoses. In the last three years and many of these are repeat patients as well as as well as fatalities, unfortunately. So that's our left hand chart. Our right hand chart are outside fires and this has been. Divided between vulnerable sector and other cause. So. Unfortunately, as you see, the vulnerable vulnerable sector has really, really spiked. It's gone up two hundred percent over the last three years. Category represents responses to fires that have been confirmed to have been lit by either heating appliances or. Basically campfires in non authorized temporary shelter areas in our in within the town. So again, that's been up two hundred percent in the last three years from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty one. Those are, those are two. Obvious concerns within the town and I know Counselor Taylor kinda chatted with that about that a little bit and I'll take questions on that. Like to end with a game. On February second in twenty twenty one. Council gave all three readings to our bylaw for the flashing green lights. Since we've implemented that bylaw, our response times have gone down from an average of nine minutes to six minutes. That's a thirty three percent faster response with with utilizing the green lights. I want to make it clear that the intent was not to. Decrease our response time or to have firefighters at the hall faster. It was to. Bring a a safety, a a public safety to. If a firefighter has a front facing flashing green light. We want pedestrians and other motorists to know that there is an emergency. And for them to provide some courtesy to the members to ensure they get to the fire station in a timely manner. Because there there is an emergency. And it's it's worked very well. It's allowed our responders safe and open travel to the fire station. It didn't take very long to educate the public. Even pedestrians are stopping and allowing if they see that green light a block away. They wait and they allow those people to get by. So that's been a huge benefit to our firefighters this year. As well as the town in general, the quicker we can get responders to the fire station, the quicker we can. Get to the emergency and mitigate what is happening. So that was my short, quick presentation. Absolutely appreciate your time in this. And any questions you may have, I am open to it as soon as I figure out how to get out of this.
Okay, thank you, Chief Robinson. Council questions, comments or concerns? We'll go with Counselor Moore first.
Through the mayor to Fire Chief Robinson. That that's a great nine minute response to six minutes. Three minutes can mean an awful lot, especially in. Emergency situations and I'd like to congratulate you and your department for that. Secondly, I saw a little stat in here at the beginning about rescuing cats and trees. Do we, do we still do that?
I I I tell you what, yes, we do. And if you call the fire department, I promise we will come. And help however we can. I do not want to rescue cats and trees, but if it's your emergency, that's our emergency and we will do it.
All right. Thank you, Chief Robinson. Counselor Sharnar.
Through the mayor to Chief Robinson. One comment and then a question. Where you stated the green. I actually observed that the other day and I was in quite shock. I pulled over and the vehicle coming, actually pulled over, let the vehicle go by. You know, so most of the time when there's red and blue, people don't. So I did witness that. The other comment I had and we were aware of it. Where if the ambulance can't attend and the fire department shows up, that's an added bonus. Is that a common practice throughout Alberta? Because all you ever hear on the news is the ambulance was late, the ambulance was late. Well, this is a bonus. There is a medical emergency. And I do respect the backing of people that are not just first aid trained, they're trained on this. So something like this, we should be mentioning. So whenever writing letters to the province, this is actually saving lives. Instead of always hearing negative, negative, there's no ambulance. Fire department can show up and that sometimes saves a life. I'm just curious, is this common practice throughout Alberta or is this Edson only?
Thank you, Counselor Sharnar. Through through the chair, Mayor Zahara, to Counselor Sharnar. It's. It's getting more common. Edson Fire Department is part of the. Albert Health Services Medical First Response Program and and that started in twenty nineteen, as you're aware, that was a. Council presentation in twenty nineteen. The the answer is kinda, we. Are about the fiftieth percentile, sixty maybe, but you know, just today, we had a medical first response where an ambulance was covering. From White Court and they were very surprised to see us show up. And we told them, yeah, no, we come to all Delta and Echo calls. They're like, oh, that's that's amazing. Thank you very much for your service kind of thing. And that's coming from the the ambulance service out of White Court that was covering for Edson. So I guess the answer at the end of the day is. We're trying to be on the leading edge of providing our municipality with the best service, whether it's. Fire or medical or rescue or hazmat and we'll continue to do that. So. I I I can't answer your question on a solid stat, Mr. Counselor Sharnar, but I can say. Edson Fire Department will absolutely do everything we can every time we're recalled.
Thank you. Counselor Bar.
Thanks. Through the chair to Fire Chief Robinson. I thank you for the information. I certainly appreciate. All the stats here and it's and it's very alarming. Some of the overdose trends that we're seeing as well as the. Vulnerable vulnerable sector fires as well. I do have a question and it's. I think similar to Counselor Sharnar's. I'm not sure if I quite understood what his question was and but it's regard to the EMS and. Ambulance, do we track? How many calls that they are unable to make it or sorry that they're that they're longer than fifteen minutes? I'm just curious what that looks like, but I'm very thankful that we have a fire department that. The volunteers are willing to get trained for this and and attendance calls. So I think it's a great. The the cost is is very low, I think, but my my concern is that the province isn't gonna. Pull their end of the deal and if they keep, you know, not providing the level of service that they should be providing, that eventually, you know. It will be all of our responsibility. So. You guys crack that?
Yeah, no, I I get it. Thank you through through the chair, Mayor Zahara, to council. We. Alberta Health Services currently does not share the stats when they're basically in that. That red alert zone where we don't have ambulances within the town. However, we have a a strong enough working relationship with our local EMS that that is shared. At a at an operational level, right? If you will. So. We know when we're first up, just because the local EMS authority is is providing that information to us. Because of that stronger working relationship we have, which is absolutely beneficial. It as far as the cost, Alberta Health Services has been really great. As well as our local EMS provider, they provide training with us and they've committed to a monthly. a monthly training session to ensure our members maintain a medical first response, uh, a level of response. And they, they buy our equipment. At the end of the day, they, they are consumables like our, uh, the oxygen, the oxygen tubing, the bandages, the, the masks, the things like that. They're, they're purchasing that for us, which is not a budgetary item that we have to deal with. So it's, it's been extremely beneficial. Um, unfortunately, yes, the ambulance is in red alert a lot in the town of Edson. Uh, that number I can't provide because that's an HS number that, uh, has, hasn't been shared yet, Counselor Byer. I hope that answers most of your question.
Uh, yes, it does. Thank you. And, um, I appreciate the information, um, that you provided about the good working relationship. So, um, definitely, uh, it's helpful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Any questions, comments or concerns? Uh, thank you, Chief Robinson, uh, for your presentation here today. I was very interested to see what the stats were and, and, you know, we talk about vulnerable populations and uh, you know, who's responsible for addressing things such as homelessness. It's really, uh, as we can see, it does, uh, fall on the municipality, even if we don't want it to, uh, when it comes to things such as uh, the outside fires that, uh, we're seeing in some of the other, uh, situations. Very happy to see the quicker response times and very thankful that we have the MFR program. Um, I'm not sure how many, uh, on council are following the situation with EMS in Alberta. Uh, but there are so many communities that are on red alerts with no ambulances available. Uh, some of those communities don't have fire departments that provide a medical first response. And uh, while it's, uh, the cost in our budget, I think of approximately $10,000. Uh, correct me if I'm wrong, Chief Robinson, it certainly, uh, is a very beneficial program for our community as we can see here today. Uh, what was, uh, is it, is it about $10,000 that you're Chief Robinson for MFR?
That is in 2019, that is what we approached council with for, with, with $10,000. Um, I don't think we've even scraped that yet, to be honest with you. Uh, again, HS has been very supportive of the program. Um, I don't think it's been a, a, a budgetary impact at all yet.
All right. Thank you very much, Chief Robinson. Anybody else? All right. Thank you very much, uh, for your presentation here today. And, uh, with that, I will call the question. All those in favor. Motion carried. We have no sundry, uh, council committee reports going back to last Wednesday. And, uh, we will start today with Counselor Byer.
So the only thing I have to report is the, uh, meeting last week, which was just a council meeting.
All right. Thank you. Uh, Counselor Moore?
I agree with Counselor Byer. That's the only thing I have.
Okay. Counselor Devon?
Uh, same thing, uh, just a update from, uh, Community Futures. Uh, June 18th, there's going to be the lemonade days again, which we, uh, had the pleasure of, uh, tasting some different types of lemonade. It was great. So we get to do it again.
Has your blood sugar level gone down yet?
Just getting there. And also they moved, uh, to February 17th, uh, they're opening up at the museum. They canceled here coming up.
All right. Thank you, Counselor Devon. Counselor Pacific?
Not celebrating, our council is, I've nothing to report.
Uh, Counselor Taylor?
Uh, agreed with all of the counselors, except for last Tuesday, nothing to report.
Uh, Counselor Sharnar?
I have stuff to report. Okay, so, um, January 12th, I had the Chamber of Commerce meeting. Uh, wasn't a lot on the agenda. We have not finalized the date yet for the, or the time on the AGM. And we're talking about Summer Fest. We're proposing July 13, 15 with COVID, of course, will play a part. And then on the 14th, I somehow suckered myself into, uh, attending the AGM for synergy, but I was there for informational, like a lot of board member. But the first part was just, um, information on spending and stuff. And then because I'm not a voting member, I was booted out. So that was it for that. So that'd be the last of my 10 dot ones for information. Uh, last night I had our PAC meeting. Uh, right now their mills in Edson have a good supply of lumber. Uh, they gave us the pine beetle report is declining. And the very interesting report was where we complained about the extra heat we had in the, in the June, July. It played a huge factor because it interfered with the larva to when they're getting ready for flight, the heat actually stalled them. So those are interesting stats. So they gave us all the red zones. Uh, they did, uh, cut and burn 34,000 trees, which was down from previous years and pine beetle is not going away anytime soon, but it is down marginally. So that was, and then we had a hour and a half of a presentation on fish and I didn't realize there was that many fish in the thing and half the fish don't even exist here. So an hour and a half of listening to fish talk, but that's it for my report.
All right. Thank you. And much like everybody else, I, uh, didn't have many committees, uh, that, uh, met over the last week. Uh, just for council awareness, I counsel, uh, CEO of Everidge and I met with, uh, uh, the President of the Alberta Forest Products Association yesterday, and, uh, they'll be coming forward with, uh, reporting council here as a delegation. So they'll fill you in with all those details. Um, we have no financial items, questions for media and public regarding items from this council meeting. I believe we have Mark and Adrian with us today. Either one of you have questions?
Adrian has a question.
Go ahead, Adrian. You're muted there, Adrian.
Good evening, everyone.
Evening.
Um, through Mr. Mayor, likely to Chief Robinson, I'm wondering the 22,198 person hours, is that strictly volunteer or is that volunteer and paid positions combined?
Hi, Adriana. Um, through, through the, uh, mayor to you. It is only obligated hours, basically. So it's, it's weekend on call and responses and training. So our firefighters are classified as paid on call. But with that said, it's, uh, the, the, the pay is an honorarium essentially. So you know, mo- most municipalities would consider that as a straight-up volunteer fire department. But those, yeah, in short, those hours are compensated, uh, in a, in a minimal fashion. I hope that answers your question.
Yes, thank you. Um, and then I do have a follow-up if I may.
Go ahead, Adrian.
Um, are all of the fire department members trained for that level one first response training or only certain number per shift?
Uh, thank you for the question. It's, it's a good question. Not all, uh, are, are trained to that medical first response level. That said, the ones we send on calls are all trained. So not, not everyone wants to be a, a paramedic or, uh, you know, uh, not everyone can deal with that type of emergency, which is absolutely recognized within our ranks. So we ensure that the members that are wanting to respond are qualified and trained to respond to that type of emergency.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Adrian?
Um, no, that's all I have for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mark, do you have any questions? It'll, uh, see Mark having any questions there. So, uh, we will move on. Uh, can I get a motion, please? The meeting move into a closed meeting session pursuant to section 197 of the Municipal Government Act. Please. Counselor Sharnar will make the motion. All those in favor. Motion carry. All right. Um, we've come over a closed session and council position to make motion.
Yeah, I move that we, uh, we approve the, the terms discussed in camera.
All right. Regarding the personnel matter? All right. I will call the question. All those in favor. Motion carried and can I get a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, Counselor. Should aren't all those in favor?
That's why I had you make a motion.